Educating, Informing, Serving. TV Keeping Government Honest.
We'll follow meeting to order. Are there any adjustments to the agenda?
No. What I need to talk about, I'm going to talk under... I'm sorry, I just had a work day. Under boards and officials.
Minutes from the prior meeting. I will make a motion that we accept.
I'll second that motion.
All those in favor? All right, public comments. During public comments, the select board will not allow any personal narratives, complaints about elected officials, appointed officials, or employees of the town. If an individual has an issue they wish to bring to the select board, concerning personnel should be written and submitted to the select board. Any comments during public comments should be germane to an issue that the select board can take up, and it's three minutes per person. Sandy?
No, thank you. Yeah, I'd like to, I guess I'll move this to Wednesday. There's no conflict publicly on Wednesday, but I'd like to ask or announce that we're going to have a Democratic Party caucus, and we need a public place that has wheelchair accessibility. So I'm wondering if Wednesday evening, we can use the town office.
Is it on the board up there? Is it free?
Yeah, Wednesday's free.
Yeah, Wednesday's free.
All right, I don't have a problem with that. I'll make the motion that we allow it, and you want it here.
Yeah, I want it here because they require that it be a public place with wheelchair, you know, the accessibility.
Yep, I will make a motion that we allow that.
All right, so that'll be Wednesday evening at 6:00.
All those in favor? Aye.
I don't know, I'm sorry. Is 7:00 a better time for most people? Will you find? Let me make it 7:00.
7:00.
Some more people can be present.
That's it?
Yep, that's it.
Yeah, I'm just wondering why the budget committee's going around and asking the contractor that I sub for how I get paid for hauling for the town of Athens. What business is the budget committee? Who I sub for and how I get paid when I haul into this town?
I did not know that anybody had inquired about that.
I do know that as well.
Now, I hope you've talked to your budget committee and put an end to this.
All right, we will bring that up.
Oh, maybe I can answer that, but a few years ago, I think we required anybody working within the town to show proof of insurance from their insurer. So I don't know if that's what they're wanting, to insure or whatever.
They're asking how I'm being paid.
Well, I don't know if that would be part of...
I'm a subcontractor, it's none of their business.
Somehow you have to account for taxes. Either the town has to account for it, or you have to.
Town doesn't pay any taxes.
Town doesn't have anything to do with it, so anything else for public?
No.
Dawn?
No, thank you.
All right, the select board appointment. I know of a couple. Have you heard of anybody? I've Jimmy Trimple and Dennis have both been.
Two, Jim.
Janet?
Janet.
Are you looking? Okay.
If I have to.
Okay. All right, and Janet.
I'll withdraw my name and see if Jimmy's interested.
Okay. Do you both want to speak on it, or have something to say?
I'll just tell my name if Jimmy wants it.
Congratulations, Jimmy.
I would not want to give Jimmy Trimple.
You're welcome. I will second that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Well, Jimmy, why don't you come up, and Darlene will give you the oath, and you can join the meeting.
You can have a seat of honor up here.
Okay. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that you will faithfully execute the office to which you have been elected and will therein do equal right and justice to all men in the best of your judgment and abilities according to law? Do you also solemnly swear or affirm you will support the Constitution of the State of America and of the United States? So help me God. Okay, I just need you to sign right where it says. Thank you.
All right, well, congratulations. I'll just thank you. As Tom can attest, these are more comfortable here, right?
No, they're a lot comfortable out here.
The air's more comfortable out there.
All right. Six was a confirmation of a vote we had taken in July, but it wasn't in the minutes, so we just want to confirm that again. There was a motion to amend as road foreman as of September 1st, and we voted for that, but we left it out of the minutes, so we want to just confirm that vote tonight. So I'll make that motion.
I'll second that motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. The Bass Trail use. Amber?
I do have the land use agreements from Bass to sign. In the past, we went to the school board to get permission to cross the property for the winter months for snowmobiling. Now that the town has purchased the building, we need permission from you guys. It's a $2 million insurance policy, so if anything ever happens, they can't go after the town for anything. They have to go through Bass Insurance. So it's on your behalf that you can give us actual legal permission to.
So does anybody that chooses to, whether they're a Bass member or not?
Right.
Bass members?
Yep.
Even if they're not a Bass member, are they covered as well?
They do, because it covers the landowners.
Okay, all right. I just wanted to confirm that.
And the school has done that in the past.
Yes.
I don't have a problem.
I don't have a problem.
Do we have a motion?
I'll make the motion to let the Bass Trail system use the...
All right, have you signed it?
Yes, you can sign it as well. And you come every year to...
I can, or you can sign until further notice, whatever you guys prefer.
Why do we have to do it until further notice?
That's fine. You can add that to my running the motion.
So what do we have for the motion that...
Motion to sign permission for Bass to use...
The existing trail, the existing trail on the school property.
Existing trail on the school property. Until further notice.
And that I be authorized to sign it until further notice.
Okay.
Do you have a second? Do you second that? Second that? All those in favor? Aye. Do you need our mailing address and stuff for you?
Can we have a copy of that?
Yeah.
All right, Census 2020. We'll call on you.
Thank you. Is this the best place to stand from?
Yeah, you can come up front here, so everybody else doesn't have to turn around.
Okay. Well, thank you for having me, first of all. My name is Thompson, and I'm with the U.S. Census Bureau. I actually live up the road in Chester, so I'm local. And I was hired to talk about the U.S. Census and the rollout for 2020, and what it means for small towns in Weeden and Windsor Counties. So that's basically why I'm here. And this isn't going anywhere big, is it? I'm supposed to be... I was trained in New York. I'm supposed to be in a three-piece suit right now with a tie, and I said, "No, you don't understand."
It's only going on the internet.
You don't understand how we do things in Vermont. I'm not doing it that way.
It's only going on the internet, so nobody else sees it.
It's supposed to be a half an hour presentation, but obviously you have a lot of work to do here, and I'll try and wrap this up in five minutes, and I'll answer any questions from either the select board or anyone else. I'm more than happy to. As you know, we have to do this every 10 years under the U.S. Constitution. There's a count of everybody in the United States, and reapportionment is based on that, and more importantly, probably, is $675 billion in federal aids, in grants, in assistance, is all based on that number for the next 10 years. So it's really important that every single person gets counted. And a lot of times, people overthink the census, and they say, "Well, I've got my niece living with me because there's an issue with her parents, but she's not part of our family, so we don't count her." Yes, you do. "I've got someone living with me..." Well, they're not school age yet, so they don't count. Yes, they do. "I just moved into town last month, so do I count? Because I don't get the homestead thing yet." Yes, you do. It's not a question of are you eligible to vote, are you living in an illegal apartment or in a treehouse. It's are you here in the town, because your existence in the town impacts the town, and therefore, should the town apply for a grant for any reason? Your body counts. The rollout has already started, and about a month or so ago, the Census began checking address lists, because obviously in 10 years, addresses change, either because a new 911 system is introduced, or new houses are built, or new living units are put on properties that only had one living unit before, and now there's two, and now there's three. So the address checking has begun. Part of that's done through the post office, part of that is done through town hall, and I don't know if you've received the information.
Received a couple of calls.
Yeah. And Athens is tough, because Athens has got overlapping ZIP codes for post office addresses and things like that.
We don't have overlapping...
Yes, we do.
Yes, we do.
Yes, we have new things.
Saxon's, we do.
Yeah, and some people have Saxon's post office boxes.
Yeah, we have the post office boxes, but to deliver it to the houses, it's only...
Chester, right. So, but in any event, all the physical addresses have got to be cross-referenced with postal addresses, and if your post office box is, town's in, and your physical address is, it just creates an obstacle that a lot of other towns don't have. So what will happen very shortly is that there will be people driving into Athens, and they will have badges just like the one I'm wearing. They've been hired by the Census to do physical address checks, and this has caused a lot of concern in other communities. I've been doing these meetings for a while now, and people, the social media lights up, "Why was this person standing in front of my house, looking at my house numbers?" And largely, it's because the Census does not get mailed to you personally. It doesn't come to Jane Smith. It comes to occupant at a particular address. And so the addresses have all got to be as precise as possible by the time the census is actually rolled out. So if you see people, again, in the next couple of weeks, this starts here, yes, it is legit, they will have a badge, they will have been cleared through, you know, I had to fingerprint it and go through a federal clearance. If there's any question, "Why is this person standing outside my property looking at my house?", which is totally understandable, I will be giving my business cards to you guys, you can keep them at town hall here. Feel free to call me, and I could always double-check and make sure that it was in fact legit.
And they will show their identification.
And they absolutely will show their identification, and they will not be asking, you know, they'll not be asking, "Hey, can I see your identification?". All they're doing is address checking at this point. Mid-March, everyone will get the first mailing, and there's going to be four mailings from the U.S. Census. And the first is very short and says, "Go online and fill out your census form. It's seven questions, that's it. Seven easy questions." It's hoped that most people will respond to the self-response type of thing. They can use the internet, they can use their telephone, they can... By the third mailing or the fourth mailing, you will actually get the census forms saying, "Hey, come on, guys, fill this out and send it in." It's only after you've received four mailings and haven't responded that someone will physically come knock on the door. And we want to try and avoid that as much as possible, because it's a little nerve-wracking vote for homeowners and for the people actually doing it, showing up at your door, "Hi, what's your name?", and stuff like that. So we want to encourage people to self-respond as much as possible, so that that doesn't actually happen. The importance to your town, as I said, $675 billion in almost every federal program you can imagine is based on this census, and this is it for the next 10 years. So whether it's women, infant, children, whether it's housing rehab funds, whether it's fuel assistance funds, all this is based on the number of people who respond from the town of Athens, for the town of Athens. And those are the numbers that will be used in allocating dollars going into the future. There are certain obstacles. As I said, some people don't think that, you know, someone in our house counts. Everyone counts. The Census knows that there is traditionally an undercount of children ages zero to five for whatever reason. People just don't count them, because maybe they're not school age or something. In Athens, I'll be frank, 50% of the children zero to five are living in households that have poverty-level income. The people most likely to benefit from being counted tend to be the people who are the most undercounted, and that's a vicious cycle. So you want to talk this up in the community and tell people, "Yes, respond. It's good for the town, it's good for the families in town, it's good for the kids in our town." And the other obstacle I run into all the time, and it's common in this area, people don't trust the government. I get it, okay? They don't want to tell, "Why do you have to know that I'm living here?". And there's a fear that the information is going to go to someone who they don't want to have it. The Census Bureau is not allowed by multiple Supreme Court decisions to release individual or household data. And that means if you say you're sleeping on someone's couch, they're not going to tell the building and zoning inspector. If you're homeschooling your kids, they're not going to tell the school district. If you've subdivided your house, and you have someone living in the garage, and someone else living in the barn, and someone else living under a doormat, it doesn't get told to the town, it doesn't get told to any government official. This is, I mean, if I were to find something like that out and tell someone, I actually go to jail for five years and get a quarter million dollar fine slapped at me, and this job is frankly not worth it. So there's a sense of, "I don't want to tell the government this stuff", but it is only... When you respond to the census, you actually respond with a number, it's a 12-digit number they'll give you in the original mailing. And after that, the data is aggregated, and your individual data is wiped out from the system for exactly that purpose. So basically, all I'm here to ask is, A, that you get the word out, talk it up, let people know this is important for the town. B, there are jobs available. There is nothing more important than local knowledge. You guys know better than anyone else who lives where and what, you know, screwy addresses might exist. Census pays $16.50 an hour to people to actually do the address checking and do the enumerating, and it's on their schedule. So it's great for parents with split shifts, or single moms who can work during the school day but not after that, or school teachers, active retirees. It's a great job, and I will leave with you the flyers here at town hall, and if you could post them somewhere or have them available, that'd be great, because we'd like to hire people from Athens to actually be doing any work in Athens. It makes it a lot smoother for the community and for everyone else involved. What else can I say? And that's pretty much it. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them about the rollout, or the process, or anything else, or if you have any suggestions as to who might be a good organization, if there's an organization in town that reaches out to a lot of people that should have this information, let me know, and I'll contact them.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions?
Yes. Did you or your group ever send out these applications back in 2018? Because I received some.
In 2018.
2018.
Wow!
Saying it was for the 2020 census. It came from Pennsylvania, and I still have the copies at the house, because I didn't fill them out and I didn't send them back.
Okay, the 2018, you received a long questionnaire?
Yeah.
Okay, that would have been the American Community Survey, which is a different survey that the Census sends out in the years in between the decennial census.
And it was said it was for the 2020 census. And how would I know that on certain date in 2020 that I'm still going to be in that house?
You're right.
You come in 2020, and I can tell you I'm there.
I expect it was the American Community Survey, which doesn't have this, which is important information, but doesn't have the same impact that decennial census has. But actually, you raise a really good issue. If someone loses 50% plus one of the time in your house, they count. So if, you know, if in a divorce situation, where the kid lives with mom 50% of the time and dad 50% of the time, it's basically, who do they live with one day more? And if you can't figure that out, April 1st is the key day. If someone moves into town on March 30th, they count. So April 1st is pretty much the key day of 2020.
So when are they coming around to do the census of the final date?
The mailings start mid-March. The knocking on the doors will only happen towards the end of April for those who have not responded, and it must end in, it'll end in July, so it'll only be during that period.
So if you have someone who's a second homeowner, they're only here in the summer months or half the year, and then they go someplace for the winter months, how would those folks be counted?
Those, well, the, basically, they will be, they'll get the mailing, maybe at one, maybe at two places, and it will ask in their name and their birthday, and where they live most of the time. It will then also ask, I think it's the third question, "Is there any other place you could possibly be counted?". This is also how we deal with college students, because the college student, you know, responds from their dorm or from their, from wherever they're living for college, but mom and dad say, "I'm paying the bills, they're going on my census." So the Census will actually cross-check when they get the same name, birthday, and you fill out, "Where else could I be counted?". And then make a determination based on, "Where are you most of the time?".
Anybody else have any questions?
Well, it's a simple question, but if you wanted to get the information out to the town, there's a little community newsletter called The Athenian.
What is it called?
The Athenian.
The Athenian.
And that's put out by?
The editors are Sherry Mark and Dennis Hunt, but it's theathenianvt@gmail.
Is there a copy on the...
It's a community newsletter? I could probably find it online if I know.
It's a graph in here.
No, it's just emailed around.
It's emailed and printed out.
Dennis Hunt is the one in charge.
Dennis Hunt?
Dennis.
It's part of Grafton here.
It's Grafton here.
Well, if I can get ahold of him through them, that would make it...
Through Grafton here.
Okay.
His telephone number's listed under Dennis Hunt.
Very good. Thank you, I appreciate that.
All right, anybody else?
Cards.
Okay, I'm leaving, I have one bit of information on everything I just discussed, and if anyone needs my card for any reason, there's a step of it.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
For letting me have the time.
All right, town boards and officials. Sandy?
Amber's now officially the chair of Board of Listers. She's in charge of 2020, 2020, is it 2021? 2020?
2020.
Grand list. So any questions for the listers, I'm still willing to answer, but Amber's the big co woman now.
Any? All those in favor?
Right.
Yes, on our budget committee, we're discussing getting ready to go over our budget for the next year, and we were wondering about setting up a time to visit with the select board on your next meeting.
Like an hour before?
Like an hour before. I think it's the 17th.
October 17th. So at 6:00?
Yeah.
Reasonable with you?
Yeah.
All right.
What day is that?
17th of October.
And we're also wondering about furnace cleanings, if they're on a schedule for this year, or...
Don't know that we've had them, a schedule put out for that or anything. We used to use...
Browns.
He said he was supposed to be coming down to clean.
Maybe he is.
I think he's on the schedule, has on the schedule, but I don't know when.
Just when it is.
And also, the school needs to be done, too.
And the town garage.
Is he on the schedule, all three of them?
I don't know.
Okay. All right, okay.
Well, we can get, we can get him in.
Well, we just thought this time of year, it's kind of the thing.
And she's probably busy, everybody's probably thinking the same.
Yeah. Anything else?
Yeah, there's the bigger issue we heard about with either short-term renting, like a porta potty for the garage, and long-term thinking about putting a bathroom in that building. And I guess in the short term, the question that came up at the budget committee meeting was that, and we got the information from Denise, obviously, about needing to rent a porta potty because of having a new employee who doesn't have a house to go to in town, and why it's not an option, since we have two buildings that both have bathrooms here and up at the school, why that isn't a better solution than paying extra for an outdoor, non-running water?
Well, we've discussed both issues there. Can you go and look at the price of what?
Yeah, price for porta potties are approximately $130 a month. We haven't really looked into the cost of the septic system, but then again, we would need to engineer and perk it all out again, because it's been such a long time.
Yes, we would have to have a plan, I think.
But just for the short term, using the bathroom here at the school?
What do you think, Matt? Is it reasonable to, for a key and use this bathroom here, just to rent my porta potty?
Yeah, this one or up to the school.
And then we can look into the cost of...
Yeah, why don't we do that? Why don't we give a key, and then the budget committee look to figure out how much it's going to, an estimate, how much it'll cost to put our system in out there, and maybe we'll budget for, we can discuss that in October, maybe, as to what we want to, if we want to just do a system, but how long is it for a system? Two years, once it's designed?
Once they're designed now, they're good forever.
Well, they are?
Once they're designed now, once it's stamped by the state, the prints are good forever.
There should be one all designed for that building out there.
But if it's done before 2007, it won't be valid.
But they had it done when they were going to put the new office out there, too. They've had it done plenty now. It should be a set of prints somewhere.
Oh, check the set of prints, see what the...
Dawn, you know, I don't recall that. I know it's on... Town Office Committee wasn't involved in it.
Would the state have a record of that?
If they went through the state, you can go online and look it up and see if there's one.
You're right. I can check, I can actually check that online for you and see if there was anything.
And if one was designed out already, would we have to have it all designed again or just test it again?
No, not if they accept the print. If it's listed on the website, you're good to go. I understand that.
But when, when you built the garage, we had a design made, didn't, didn't they?
Yep. But the new design, the newest one you got now, the system's down in the middle of field further than what the older one. The first design was right behind this side of the pine trees, right tight behind the grid. And when they were gonna put the town office out there, they removed it down about halfway across that field.
And was an engineer involved in both of those cases?
Yep.
Okay. Was it the same engineer?
Mike was the last one.
Yeah, I'm not sure who the fucking one, but I think it's the same engineer.
But if with the second set, that was for two buildings.
Right.
For both of them. And if all we need is for the garage itself, maybe the first design was better. And what I'm asking is, if we have that design already, do we just then have to go retest and then use that design? Will the state accept that?
Whatever print they have in file. Imagine if they designed it when they first built the garage, that one's not gonna be on file.
I don't think.
Because that one only kept for two years. But if they redid it back when they're looking at the town office, that one would be still, should be still good. And you'd be, rather than paying another three thousand dollars for a design, you'd be better off just to put the big system in. I'm sure it was an in-ground system, being in them, them soils, so.
It was.
It still would be cheaper to put the big system in than to pay refiling, about thirty-three hundred dollars to, uh, design a system nowadays with the state permits.
Well, let's look and see what we've got.
And who did you think, John, who did you think?
Michael M. P.
Yeah. I'll write down your thoughts.
Anything else for budget?
Oh, is it, is it?
We'll go on to roads.
No, no.
No?
I had to go individual.
Oh.
You didn't ask me.
I didn't, I didn't.
Um, I got a call from Dead River. And they came and inspected the tanks in the office here, in the garage, in the school. This one and the school one passed, but the one in the garage, they need a solid core block, which there's not solid core blocks underneath the oil tank. And they also in- insist that we have piping to the outside because it's a state law. It's a Vermont state law. So they're saying you have to have piping to, to the outside. Um, they also said that Dead River could do this piping, or we could do it ourselves. And if we do it ourselves, we'd have to call them first to get the size of the piping.
Do you think you can do that, or you're? Just put the blocks under and just pipe it out?
Did they tell you where they were gonna pipe it to?
No.
Just outdoors.
Because they're piping outside of that building, they're gonna stay running beneath them big block, right?
I know.
And you can't pipe it toward the end because electrical's on the end.
But they won't, they won't deliver oil until it's done.
Do they give you a cost, um?
No.
If they did it?
No.
We'll see what you can do to get it vented and, because I think all it is, is a vent pipe, right?
Well, vent pipe and filler pipe. Both have to be outside.
The tank they said was okay.
The tank is okay, they just need the venting outside.
And change the blocks.
And change the block.
And change the blocks.
Do we have any solid blocks down there?
I have to wait till the field gets down so we can pick it up.
What size tank is it? It's full?
Two seventy-five, I believe.
Well, if, uh, if you can't do it, do you think, uh, Russell Brown could do it? He probably could. Do we wanna just give them authorization if they can't do it to have them do it?
Yeah, I'd rather pay Russell locally than.
I think you ought to have a view company go and show you where to put it out through there.
Did they have a plan in mind? Did they figure that he didn't say what he was gonna do?
Well, why don't you give them a call, Matt, and just have them come out and say?
Unless they know, unless they can just tell them where they were thinking.
Yeah, just call them. Call the service department.
I'll call them one day.
All right, anybody else for boards and officials?
John, you didn't have anything for reading house?
All right, uh, roads. We go to Scott for Taylor Hill first.
Yeah, I'm just seeing, uh, you were thinking about maybe contracting it or coming up with a price of help on Taylor Hill.
I don't believe we can contract it just the same. That was the idea that we, we kicked around here, but, uh, I don't believe we're gonna be able to do that. It just falls back to the same, that, that we aren't allowed to, by statute, we're not allowed. We aren't given the authority to do it. It's not saying that we haven't, we aren't allowed, but it's, um, the statute. At least our lawyer said.
So you're saying that's something that you're not gonna do?
I, I'm not sure that we can do it.
What is he asking that you, for you to do?
Well, it, it's, it's not all out unreasonable. It's push the snow back and sand it if it gets really bad, right?
Yeah, and, um, grade it twice a year.
And grade it a couple times a year, which. My thinking is that it's not a terrible, inconvenient task.
This is the letter they presented Jimmy.
And, um, but I don't think, I don't think we're able to do it.
And you were saying earlier, to get it seen near town or would we have to bring it up to spec?
We would have to bring it up to, to, yes. And Matt, you talked to, um, Highway Down in Damarston, didn't you?
Yeah. He said it'd have to be a three rod right away. And it'd have to be brought up to, uh, the travel width. I got it all at the shop. I'll write it down for you.
So what's a three rod?
Three rod is forty-nine feet, nine inches right away from top to bottom.
A rod is sixteen and a half feet. It's supposed to be three rod. Now, to say it's three rod doesn't mean that that's where the road has to be all the way out there. But it has to be, in case you have to ditch in, you have to move something, um.
The county town can't accept it with just two rod or traveled away. Because if it's written in the deeds of properties even for a town road, that you only assume it's a three-rod road unless it states different. So can't the town accept it as a different for rods? I mean, most of your town roads you got here are earning a three-rod. They say they are, but you couldn't get three-rod.
Well, I think most of, I think all of our roads are at least three-rod and some of, and some of thirty-five are four-rod. Um, because we don't have the, um, documentation for, for the roads. Uh, they're assumed to be three-rod, right?
Assume that it's documented, that's what I'm saying. If it was documented that it could be less, would the town accept it being less than three-rod?
The state said within, with being a new road, never being a town road before, to go with three-rod. From, then that just solves all problems down the road.
They said, but can you do different?
I didn't ask him that part.
I mean, I'm, I'm not sure that we need three rods. It, it could be less, but I, I mean, I'm only going by what they said down the Damarston, so.
But that, that answer would have to come from you guys before we could go any further because there's one place I don't think you could get three rods because of the houses. Which is town roads here, you couldn't get three rods because of the houses, so.
I mean, upon thirty-five, when we had it surveyed, one place there, it was nine feet from, from the corner of the house.
Do you have that paperwork from the attorney that?
Um, I mean, I think it's reasonable that if, if we can, if, it could be less than three-rod if the state says that we can do that. I don't see that, you know, two-rod, that would be what, thirty, thirty-two and a half, thirty-three feet? Is that reasonable?
If that was acceptable with the state, would the town sign an agreement saying that we brought it up to the standards that they'd take it over? Because we dumped forty grand into it and then you guys say, nah, we've changed our mind.
Yeah, I, I'm, I would like to do that for me to start taking, if, instead of us just say, well, make, make it a, do all these things to it and then we'll think about it, I would think we would come to an agreement and say, yes, if, if it is brought up to these specs and we got the right-of-way up through there, then we will take it over as a town road. Is that reasonable?
That's reasonable.
And you guys have the specs?
What?
You have the specs?
You've got specs from?
I got specs from the state. I don't really know.
Specs mean nothing if they weren't signed by the selectmen. Do you guys accept the road and bridge standards every year?
Yes.
Yes.
And that would be what the specs that you signed last would be?
And as long as the state is fine with it not being three-roads, as long as we agree with it, I'm fine with that.
You okay with that, Matt?
Yeah. I'll check with them tomorrow.
Now, we would have to get the, the right-of-way from everybody all the way up as far as we go. And everybody's in agreement with that?
Well, we haven't done anything because we need to know that it could be done. You know, if, I mean, it's a lot easier to sell a two-rod road to homeowners than it would be three-rod if it was gonna be on a doorstep.
Yeah, I, I mean, to, but to say it's gonna be three-rod, we're not gonna expand, and you know that.
But you can.
But we can't, if we need to.
Yes.
And at some point, you know, if, on that road, you never will, let's say thirty-five, this road out here, you may have to expand it. Go one side to straighten out a corner or.
The only reason I would foresee that is if there was more of a destruction and we'd have to fix the road and do something different. That would really be the only reason, you know, if another Irene comes through and washes everything out, we have to fix it.
That road darn Irene didn't have an ounce of, nothing.
Well, I was just using that for example, but I mean, if something's not like that, capacity comes through, we can't foresee that. And if we have to, we do something with the road. It's possible areas might need to be, but if we have an agreement, we'll keep it as close to the two-roads as we can.
Right. Well, I, I think that's what we'd like to hear, that we would accept it if it was two-rod.
I'm okay with you.
Um, the right-of-way issue, does everyone that has property on that road have to sign something stating they're giving their right-of-way?
I would say they would have to make it that road.
Yes.
Yes.
I think that should be presented to us too.
Oh, yeah. I mean, that would have, I mean, you know that everybody on, on that road, as far as you go, as far as the town road goes, would have to, um, would have to sign, sign up on that, so.
Could you come up with that form that people would sign with the standards on it? I mean, the state must have something that you follow.
Well, look and see if they have any of that forms or anything like that. If they don't, we can probably get an attorney to draw, draft something up.
BLCT might have something too. I don't know. There's probably something similar to what Green Mountain Power used to get a right-of-way to use to put new poles in. Probably something similar to that.
Um, yeah, as, as long as everybody's gonna give us a right-of-way and it's brought up to whatever the specs are that that they pulled out.
I kind of also, I'd like to try to find that and then tip that to the people on Taylor Hill. So if we need to vote on it in our October meeting. After October, who knows when the snow's gonna fly?
Well, the town, it wouldn't be up to spec, so anything that's gonna happen.
We'll see next year.
It would have to be at next spring probably anyways, wouldn't it?
Oh, I'm sure. By talking thirty or forty thousand dollars to get it up to the state specs.
Oh, okay.
So. What would you like from us?
Um, can you guys, do you, um, like the minimum, less than two-rod, or is two-rod the minimum?
Like, like we said, the, the state said three-rod. Two-rod, I would think, would be reasonable, you know, it's dead-end road, you know.
Is it much less than two-rod going up through there in, in place?
Well, it's kinda like Topher's Road. The road itself is definitely only by like a rod.
It's like Topher's Mill Hill.
Mill Hill, probably wider than Mill Hill. But as far as the, the rods, it doesn't matter what's in the way for the rods. It just gives you the, a right-of-way.
Yeah, I mean, we, we wouldn't be improving, you know, working on the whole two-rod, three-rod of it. It's just there to have it. But you, you would agree that two-rod would probably be reasonable for up through there?
Yeah.
So, Matt, we'll get something from the state, see if they've got something. If not, we can look at, uh, BLCT, see if they have any agreement there. And if, if everybody's in agreement to give us a right-of-way and go, go from there, then we can draft up something, have an attorney draft up something to say that, uh, we will, uh, work to make it a town road if it's brought up to specs and, and we'll vote on that. Is that reasonable?
Yeah.
That's reasonable.
Well, not good with everybody?
Now, bringing it up to specs, is that something that the townspeople, um, kinda let us do?
I think it's gotta be up to specs before you can take it over. Because once we take it over, you can't work on it.
Get nothing from that one if you get an agreement, they should have that option.
All right, anything else on this, Taylor Hill? All right, move on to regular roads.
Everything's going good. We've got some roads to drain once it starts raining a little bit. But everything's holding up?
Um, we've got two, uh, two agreements here for Cargill. One for six hundred ton of salt at, uh, seventy-six ninety-nine a ton delivered. And, uh, Cleoline de-icer enhanced bulk.
Who's go, who got the state bid?
Neither one of them. Well, um, the one for this area is Avanachi salt, which is out of New York. Which is ninety-nine cents cheaper than Cargill for Grafton. But that's the same price for Grafton on Cargill.
Okay, so it's seventy-six dollars for Grafton a ton?
For, to get it out of, out of Avanachi, out of New York. You can sign as many as you want, you're not au-.
Authorized, you're not obligated to have to buy that, yeah. And it's thirty tons for this, uh, de-icer. Is that?
I've never used it before, I don't think.
Yeah, that was a two-rod of green salt that you got, we got a year ago. That was just a trial view.
Yeah, that's.
I can't see much difference.
No.
And it's quite a bit more. It's eighty-six ninety-nine a ton. It's supposed to be a little, it's supposed to melt at a lower temperature, right?
Yeah.
So that's not what you treat the road with prior to, right? It's just regular?
No.
Salt.
So I'll make a motion that we sign the Cargill, um, agreement. Yeah, it's right here. American salt, uh, American rock salt.
What's the cost on that?
Seventy-five. But Cargill's out of Rockethead, right?
Yes, Bearsville, it was about.
Bearsville, but actually out of Broken, but they have some on Rockethead.
But they have that big pile down there in the, you know, steam town. So if we need some, and it's a mess out there, they usually have it.
And they're full-sifted, they're still whatever, if they're gonna do that. And they're full-sifted, they deliver it if they're in the air, so that's it.
They're all the full-sifted delivering.
Hmm. But, um.
I guess we need some sending.
Yeah, but the normal delivery on the American rock salt is three to five days after receipt of an order. So, we go through everything in a nice storm and you need some, how long's it take Cargill to get it?
Depends on the year.
It, it, don't take very long, you call, you call it up here and talk to the guy in Burlington. And if you're gonna truck it there and warn your help completely need it, you're gonna try to get it along.
Right, that.
You might not get your whole order in, but he'll get you enough to get by the storm, you know, it adds anyway.
And that's who we've used before.
And I just assumed you'd do that because, like you said, if it's a nice storm, I don't need to wait three to five days to get more salt.
So, I'll make the motion that we sign the Cargill agreement.
I'll second that motion. You said it was for thirty ton?
No, that was for the, uh, de-icer.
Oh, okay.
Enhanced bulk. Uh, this is six hundred ton.
Oh, good.
That they will guarantee us.
That's fine, I agree.
All right, all of us in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Do you want any ton of U-200?
No, it's three hundred? No, it's right around three hundred, I think.
I'll have to get from two hundred and fifty ton to six hundred.
I think we upped it one year that we used quite a bit, and this is the only that they will guarantee us this much. Isn't that how it is? They'll guarantee us that much if we-
But we don't have to borrow that much.
We don't have to buy that much, but if we went over that,
They won't.
They won't, they can't guarantee the price and they can't guarantee they'll deliver it, isn't that my, that was my understanding. All right, anything else for roads? Uh, warrants and mail.
I remember where you put the old horse. Yeah, there was nothing down there. There was nothing there.
She does.
It's a five-year look there.
Those are big jobs.
What, that belongs to them, that, well, one of us bought them. The town's got just twenty-eight, and that's thirty-three, not a problem. Anyway, I'll see you later. I will.
Yeah.
I will.
So if you want to do all that.
Yeah, because it's in our main house.
One of those back there.
Uh-huh.
It wasn't a number reason, maybe it did.
Nothing off there.
Also, it's just before we have to be there.
I think we have this, the meeting council, which was, we talked about it. She already won her, I think she's, there's a, like, temporary threshold for that.
I think it's one corner of it.
I know the, the county's always been, they've been-
But it's the whole, the most, twenty percent.
It's good, it's good. Right down there, it's like, there's an old light, it's good, it's good. We go down a ramp, we push all the snow up, and then we go to the end. Yeah, who, yeah, I don't know, it's right here.
I just, I just don't-
We should go up there, like, there's a country, so we know what's in there really.
Welcome over to Stone Hill, isn't it?
Yeah.
What's that?
That's a meeting, that's a meeting.
Six hundred.
What's it sound like?
Special meetings at the hall. What do you want, China?
What?
It's dead.
Yeah, yeah.
It's already, yeah.
It's a difficult one.
Yeah.
You know, this is an area.
It's just a shot. Between one and the other.
The business property, yeah, that's has to have a better property at Boston.
Oh, there's...
She told me she wasn't taking no voluntary marching. We don't get money to... They used to have meetings to...
The newest... They might know, but...
Well, the clothes and stuff. They say...
You save four hours.
Read it, so what's the difference?
Well, the valley cemetery, they're, they're... I guess they have fixed the roads.
And she writes in her notes, they will be included. There's nothing that isn't a final stakeup.
I don't think the board approved it all. They won't be, uh, very good, but the, uh, group association, it doesn't...
The member of the staff was the whole, that was very good.
Sure, I know you're saving, I come out that way.
And that one, that meeting house, maybe, yes.
That was whole, yeah.
Check with the, um, uh...
Well, if they have the, they'll... We want to do the scout, I'm about, and we want to do, we want to make it like that.
Sure, Matt, you're about to ruin it, it's gonna explode now. You haven't hit copy.
Sorry, but that one goes down, it's like... I think I did.
Talk about kids in our math and science a lot, and I hope they learn stuff they were stiff.
I don't really get one in the mail that I can...
As long as we're done, you go ready. I thought it was a good show, so...
Looks like they got all this...
Unless, unless we change...
You made it by him a lot of times. I don't know, I just... I was on a gentleman's...
We're asking about it for years.
We're gonna do that in a couple years, guys. So they cut those two, three ounces.
That's the Culver, uh, not Culver, so...
Four years. Oh, yeah.
Hey, look at that, you have to be, uh... We got that hammer no longer, it's pretty long. That should be hard to take care of that light, or take care of you, you don't wanna... Cause that's not that, I think that's not that blue.
Then you get your...
Actually, going around fourteen forty...
Well, after you jump over those long ones, I did, took it out, we hung it down.
Okay, come on, let's move back here, I'm getting tired.
Not even, just after...
I know, I'm tired. I had to go viewing today, so exhausted, what's it doing?
Oh, yeah, so I see the pictures you post on Facebook every day, you're not even...
Hey, today we got treated, today we got treated like humans. We got... Chubby bikini muppets from the Hunts, from the...
The Hunts are nice people.
I know, they treated us like humans.
I really wish that you go to some other places and have a seat.
Oh, I, I've been to those places. I've been to those places, man.
You had tomatoes at my house.
What?
You had tomatoes at my house.
That's right, we had tomatoes at your house last year.
I went, I took them and they were all gone, I don't know what happened.
There were only a few, except Carol, she corrupts us when she comes into this one. Oh, not at the farm? And then, um, the whites, that are just down the street from them.
We've got this letter for the annual business meeting of BLCT. Is anybody going to go to the annual business meeting that we know of? We can appoint them as our voting delegate. It is, um... October, yeah. October second.
What time?
One o'clock in the afternoon. You wanna go? Would anybody like to become the voting delegate for the BLCT annual business meeting? You know, big clamor, I guess we will not assign a voting delegate.
What's that?
All right. Yeah, we do this. That's just mail, um, that's... Oh, that's mine. Um, this is an email I got. Don, you're still on the emergency committee?
Yeah.
Anybody else? I'll give these to you. It's, uh, kind of, it's a state program of what we are already doing, kind of, but it might be good to try and integrate the databases with that. But that would be something the emergency committee could look at. Uh, what it is, it's, uh, people that can sign up, the state will keep a database of them if there's another Irene or something and they need assistance. It will give them, the state will be able to print out a list of, uh, vulnerable people, uh, that, uh, emergency services...
It's just like a state version, what we're doing in Bend.
It is, but it's, uh, I mean, it is a state database. A league could pull from, or the fire department could pull from, um, and it might be good to integrate into that, uh, into that list.
Yeah, this, this could be a good development.
All right. Uh, we're on to executive sessions. Uh, I will make a motion to go into executive session for a possible legal matter where premature public knowledge would place the town at a substantial disadvantage and, uh, say the select board, Darlene and Sandy and Janet, uh, would be in the, the executive session. Is there a second?
No, second, that was...
All those in favor?
Aye.
Um, no decisions were made in executive session. We'll move on to select board comments.
I'd like to welcome Jimmy to the select board, and once again thank Tom for all of his many years of service.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Jimmy, hand me that. You better get one, Paul, and then over here, somebody.
All right, Jimmy, you got any comments? All right. Uh, public comments on agenda items.
Road crew.
Yep.
You've men, you mentioned that there was a road crew.
Yes.
But who is the road crew? I know Matt.
Matt is?
Yeah, he's...
Eugene.
Eugene Bills.
Eugene Bills?
Yes, he was hired, uh, at the special select board meeting. All right. Comment on agenda. All right. So enjoy the business. I will make a motion to adjourn. Yeah, I'll grab you, I got some papers to give you, so... Uh, I will make a motion to adjourn.
Second.